Microsoft Teams is being recorded. Participation in the meeting is your consent to be recorded and to the rebroadcast of the recorded meeting. Recorded meeting will be available for viewing on the town YouTube channel. First off, everybody has their cell phone on mute or off that's in the room. You don't get disturbed. And now that that has probably been done, Karen, you want to start with? Who are we starting with?
I will. Council with President.
You're empowered.
Whoever's cut the bunch at the most can go first. There you go. It won't be anybody, actually.
Well, let's, let's take maybe the easy ones first. Tree commission?
Yes.
Justifi- justifiability, sir?
We've had, the last two years, our budget has been $12,000. And last year and this year, as I mentioned, we had the night removal of one more tree. We will have spent $24,000. So basically, the last two years has been all tree removals. And as I mentioned the other night, we need to put some new trees where we cut them out. But I also, in fact, I got a call today from a lady that has a dead tree in Parkway. She called town hall and referred to me. So we keep getting these tree removals, Parkway removals. I think we'll pay the nine more of them right now. Dogwood Hills, who we've worked with, and was given a great prices on trees. In order to come to this town at the Millbury, they really want something around 25 minimum trees. We've taken out 22. That doesn't mean we'll put 22 back in because we cannot put a new tree where it's a tree out because it still has a root system. You know, these trees spring up, but there'll be some 20 plus trees and more because there's other areas we have in the center. So we could easily eat up 25 trees. That's going to be somewhere in the range of eight to 9,000 dollars. And that would leave us, if, if we got the same amount as last year, that would leave us about $3,000 to do tree removal. And from what we learned in the last two years, I don't think that's going to be enough if we want to continue to plant trees. And I would urge you to consider recontinuing that tree planting program because I think it's a great asset to the department.
What's the cost of a removal of a tree, Mike, or on average?
It, Bill, it varies. The one I told you the other night, that big one, that's, that's $3,000. That's $3,000.
Right, that's one on our street.
We haven't had anything that big. Biggest one we've had is probably around 15 to 1700. And we, in that 22 trees, we had some that were as, as little as $200 and $300 too. But they were dead, so we took them out. They were in parkways. So it ranges. It can go anywhere. It just depends on, on, you know, what particular tree we need to take out. I'll give you an example. On the corner of Lake Shore Drive and Main Street, kitty corner from the archery is a, there's a white house there that has a hair styling place in it. That tree last fall sometime, in a storm, dropped a limb that was huge. And so we, I think, in fact, I think Bob, you took it down, took the limb away. But anyway, the tree was, if you looked up into it, it was really in bad shape. So we talked about it and I asked Bill Bailey, Hooters Tree Service, they said, give us a priority on these because all of a sudden there's other trees popping up. And this one was priority. That was a $1,300 tree removed. So we might have switched off a $300 tree for 13, but we did eat up the budget. But, you know, at this point in time, what happens year to year is that we get calls constantly. And they say, we have a bad tree in Parkway that needs to be removed. I mentioned the other night, right across street here, there's a dead tree. I think there's three trees in that parkway where the new, where the new trail is going. One of them is right back here and it's dead. And the owner of this house across the street called me and said, can you take the tree out? Well, I took a look at it. We were going to try to fit it into the budget. And then I stopped in here and looked at the drawings and the aerials of the bike trail. And those trees are set to be taken up, you know, as part of your bike trail cost. Same thing is happening in a few other spots. I think we've got three or four that called us and they're, they're all going to be in the bike, in the bike path, so walking path.
Were any of those on South Main Street, Mike?
How far south?
Pretty far south. Ask Don Baker's house.
No. We didn't get any, any call on those.
I only ask because we, we may narrow that part to 8B to save on construction costs, which means a couple of trees might not have to come out now there now. So that's why.
Yeah.
Nobody feel that.
Well, I brought this up two or three years ago when they presented the path at the parole station. We're getting off, off track here, but we put those, those maples in opposite cemetery about 10 years ago. They're really, and they're really turned into nice trees. But I don't know how much room we have between there and the cemetery lot line. So I don't know what's going to happen there.
Now, there, there where the bike path is, who's taking, do you take those down or does, like, you didn't, you had nothing to do with those? That's what I thought. That's no fault, that's what I'm getting at.
There'll be any construction done.
Okay, thank you.
And Bob and I, I talked to Bob about it. They're in the contract. So we're just referring those people like this guy across the street. We're just referring him that. Said, thank you, take care of. The ones I'm talking about are not in the bike path. There's stuff that we just constantly get calls on. And, you know, I don't know if you remember 15 or 16 years ago when we started this thing. We, they're an inventory of every tree in town. But guess what happens to trees in 15 or 16 years? What was a healthy tree 15 or 16 years ago could now be scheduled to be taken down. So this stuff keeps coming at us year after year. And the last two years have been the years when we really have concentrated on getting bad trees out. Curve issues, sidewalk issues where these trees are lifting.
So do you have a number in mind, Mike? I mean, in a closed budget, it's $12,000. If you have a number in mind that you'd be asking for, given all that we've said?
If, you know, we, we could use all the money we can get because we just keep doing more things. But I, I understand that there has to be a limit as to how much we can do in a given year. One of the, one of the given is if we're going to put new trees in, it's to buy 25 trees. That's $350 a tree planted. 15 years ago, we were young enough to do that on those plantings ourselves. But
That ship sailed too.
So we're looking at $8,500 to $9,000 depending on the tree we buy and what species we buy. That's where that's going to be. If we were given $12,000 as an example, and we had $3,000 left from plantings, this one tree I spoke about the other night, we eat our budget. And so right now there are, well, as of today, there's another one. So there's 10 trees on our list. And I, all I tell the people is we, we have no money until the budget is approved. If there's money in the budget, we will come in the Parkway if it's in the Parkway. Has to be in the Parkway, can't be in the park. We'll come and take it out.
So are you prioritizing based on probability that the tree will fall on someone being first to take out? So the one that has the highest probability of falling on a house?
You know what's even more, more dangerous, Bill, is the, is these old trees like the one I just described on, on the corner up here? They're so brittle. And if you, when they cut these trees out, you look inside, they're nothing but a hole. Right? I mean, they're eating up my ants. So what happens is that stuff, some of the, this branch that fell was about that big. It was probably from me and Bill. And it fell and landed in the street. Fortunately, there was nothing under it. They cut it up and took it away. So, well, what was left? If you looked up in the tree, right now, if you looked up in there, you wouldn't see much because there's leaves and everything. But it's a, it's a tree that when they, when they looked at this branch, there were thoughts left inside. That tells you that that tree is going to, you know, is going to come down one way or the other, piece by piece, or the whole tree can fall. There's one on Lake Street last fall. About, near Lake, between Lake and College that, that came up, came down, landed on that house.
So my question is, are you prioritizing them in that order of being the most vulnerable or most liability?
We, we, we do an inspection with Hooters. And they go around and based on their expertise and a little expertise we have, we decide what preference we want. However, that gets, quite often gets set in. Last year was set aside a number of times because someone called and said, here's a tree that's really bad. And we took a look at it and said, yeah, it's really bad. So
Moving target.
So we've got trees left out of last year's budget that we didn't take down yet. We don't need to take them down.
Are we putting up trees that have the same, or have maybe a longer life or are more hardy, storm hardy or whatever? In other words, you don't want soft maples?
No. The old silver maples that everybody knows, the ones over the helicopters, if we call it. They're, they're brutal.
Yeah.
They, they're like dead stick.
Right.
Those are the majority of the ones we've taken down. That's the good news. The bad news is we've got zillions of those.
But we're replacing them with something more hardy?
We're not, we're not putting silvers in.
Okay.
What's the dollar figure for the number of trees that you need to take down? What's your guess?
My guess, we probably would be about, let's say, let's say Sally, right now we've got 10 of them, okay? I would say an average of probably $600, $700.
So about $7,000.
$6,000 to $7,000.
And $9,000 for new trees.
Yes. And so if we
$16,000.
Whatever you decide on the budget, if we don't get enough to do this work, we think that our necessity next year is
That's where I'd be coming from. I mean, this year, just take down trees and next year, plant trees.
We can, you know.
I mean, that thought process, and I'm not saying you won't have trees next year you have to take down, but if you've got a backlog of trees right now that you've got to take down.
Well, we have a backlog of people that are requesting trees being taken.
And what would that figure be? Would that take up to full 12,000 or would that be 13,000?
It would not. It would take about five or 6,000 to do this. So just
Okay.
You have right now. He might pick up another.
12, that's correct.
Rich just came out with $16,000.
If Mike's asking for $9,000 for new trees and $6,000 for removals, that's $15,000. You, you high finance, ask people to head that up.
So he's asking for $3,000 to $4,000 more than is in the budget?
Yes. And, and Karen knows over time that it's, we've had years at the end of the year, we have money left in the budget. And it goes into another fund that I'm not sure what. Statistics are about, pardon me.
It just returns to the general fund. Usually you
So it reverts to that.
And some other projects.
If we did 25 trees next year, new plantings, and we took down, say, $3,000 worth of trees, we don't spend in the budget, we don't, I mean, we're not going to look for a place to.
Mike, in taking the trees down, is it a fixed cost per tree or depending on the tree?
Depends on the tree.
So I would think the $600 or $700 per tree. I'm trying to think of some trees. I must have a pretty good deal with Hooters?
We do.
Okay.
We think we do. Based on other price we got.
Because you've got one marked there at the corner of Ohio and there's a mark on one of Ohio and Lake Shore. And that's a big tree. I don't know whether that's on your list or not.
That is not on the list.
Okay. I don't know if there's a green mark or something on there.
Yeah, that was years ago. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll give you an example. In front of the Methodist resale shop, there's a tree there on the Parkway that I can't tell you how many years ago, but someone put a piece of cable on it to, to wire up a, a bad branch. I don't know if you've seen that. Go take a look at it. That thing, that tree has grown around that cable, I don't know how many years ago. That, that thing has to come down. That's, that's actually one of her lists. That's probably, you know, that's probably a $900 to $1,000 tree. And most of those, these big trees depend on whether he has to hire, like, that somebody who's crazy enough to go up in the tree and start cutting branches. Most of these trees were taken about 60 feet.
Okay, well, let's move on. What does council think about the budget? Rich? Do you have a recommendation?
Well, if we're, if we're going to do new trees, the minimum is the $9,000. And what Mike said, where to get them to come out? So I mean, if, when we get to the bottom line, you know, afford to do 15 for the tree commission, I would support that.
I, I'm in agreement with 15. But I, again, I, I think that my opinion is more the necessity to remove the bad ones and maybe purchase more trees next year than, I'd rather see the money go to chopping trees down. But I'm, I'm good with 15. Sally?
I, I, you know, I hate to see trees get cut down, but I hate to see them fall on people and houses as well. So, you know, I'd say the priority would be on tree removal and then, you know, if we don't have enough to, you know, get him enough for his new trees and postpone that one year.
Mike, you said
Hope for the best.
I'm sorry, Phil. You said the other day that what you come to learn is the best time for this planting is in the late fall. So this is a 2022 budget. So at this time next year, based on what you're going to take down, you know, it's a pretty good idea. Do you take down trees or?
Yes. Well, I, I know we need to, I know we need new trees if we're going to continue this program. And I meant the other night, I know we put 500 trees, right?
I know.
And we probably could put, if we didn't lose another tree, we didn't take another tree, now we could probably put another 100, 150 trees in barren spots. If you drive around town, you'll see, you see a dead spot. Most of you, they'll up and down your street, there's two or three spots where trees are needed. So they needed to be planted at some time. And the problem is it's opaque then. Let's say, Bill, and I understand where you're coming from. If, if we use the money to take trees down next year and we ended up with, instead of 25 trees, 50 trees, we might need 15,000 or 13,000 next year if we're going to put trees in those spots. So sooner or later, one's going to get away from the other. And that was our thought was we don't want this removal thing to get so far ahead of us that we don't ever come up with enough money to plant the trees. Because that's what's made these parkways good. And oh, by the way, also about every third year, the fourth year, Dogwood Hills comes and they basically trim all these trees up. So, but it's not for free, but they charge. But you, if you look at the parkways, you will see, by the way, there, you have an ordinance that says that you can't plant a tree within 25 feet of a corner. And you also must have a tree that's, has eight feet of clear visibility underneath the canopy. That's so that larger vehicles can get through, so that someone doesn't get blocked and cut in front of someone else at a, at a intersection. And so what we have done is about every three or four years, and they, and this is that they're, they're a suggestion because once that tree is three to four years old, it has enough growth on it so you can start trimming up and raising the canopy on it and then shaping it. Give another example, where the car wash, it's the old car wash, on that same side of the street, there's a locust there. Someone mentioned, Bill, I think you mentioned the one across the street, the big one that's marked. Look across the street at the locust. Look at, a locust is a tree that grows like a weed. They're great trees. They're really good trees, but they grow like crazy. We trimmed that tree up two years ago and when you get a chance, just try and, I mean, it needs trimming right now, but that's another cost.
I need clarification. I heard 1,500 to 1,700 removal, the first time I asked you.
For big ones.
And then you said 500 to 600. Or 670. So I'm confused.
As an average, the average.
What is the average?
The average, the average would probably be five to, oh, I, I think I said six to seven. The average would probably fall in that category unless we ran into something like this one, this other one down at Windfield.
So you don't have, it's very rare to have one of our thousand. Is what you're saying?
The real big ones.
Just trying to understand the number.
Real big ones could be as big as 13, 1500. But it depends on what trees we
Yes.
Yeah. We took two, I think River Bridge is up on College Ave. It's where the Larson's, Savannah and Eric Larson live. These were, they were, were dead trees. They were about to sprout around. So when like, as Hooters would take it down, Bill said, we'll just take it down. Take
How many trees die a year? How many, how many trees are targeted for removal every year on average, if you look at the last 10 years?
We probably, we, we don't target them for removal because we
Don't have the budget.
Well, we've had years where our budget was what, Karen? Four, 5,000?
Yeah.
How many, how many should we target a year?
To take out?
Yeah.
Well, if I, I mean, I would say if we can take 10 a year out, that would be
Don't tell me what I want to hear. I just want to know the real answer.
Say 10.
Okay.
But the one like on Windfield is going to be $3,000.
Right.
This, that's
Okay.
Five of your
I'm getting to my opinion, which is 15 is too light, in my opinion, I think 20. Because you're never going to catch up.
I agree.
You're never going to catch up. Everyone's trying to beat the number down, but the, the number isn't right now, it's not going to in the right ballpark.
You're exactly right. We are never going to catch up with $10,000 a year.
I propose that's my opinion.
Good. And you know what? In a, in a given year, and I told Karen this, if we don't spend it, we put it back in the budget. I don't know that that's good for everyone, every department to do that. But someday, if I live long enough, we'll catch up to this thing. But, you know, it's at 16 years now and we haven't caught up yet.
3,000. Extra isn't going to do it.
Well, 3,000, no, that's not going to do that much. And Bob can tell you that we run into storms. We have, we have too many problems with that. We've had years where we lent them some of our money out of the side by the people's sake, what they have in their budget for tree cleanup is not adequate if you have a big storm. So it's like
Do you have a comment? Yeah, let's move on, but let's
Okay.
Kind of try to settle on
On summation, whatever you can get. If we're going to continue this program.
Okay, so it'd be probably somewhere between 16 and 20. We'll just
Yeah, I mean, we
Put those into the numbers.
We can make any amount we work. And I certainly, I understand what Bill is saying, both of you are saying that, yes, they could be a danger to get them out, but the other side of the coin is then all of a sudden we're so far in the hole of trying to find new trees in the neighborhood.
That's good.
Great.
Thank you.
He is a very valuable service.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I go in there?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Who wants to go next? Wayne?
Any other organizations?
Well, well, we can do the, yeah, we can do that. We got, is Russ here for the aging?
Yeah, Jan is on the phone too.
Okay, let's do that while they're on the phone.
I believe
Council on Aging?
Council on Aging. Yes. Everyone's familiar with what we do.
Yep.
We provide a, a community center for seniors, all kinds of activity. The taxi cab service, we do here in Auburn, once a week. I think some people don't understand, that's for everybody. That's not just for seniors. And that's 250 a drop. So if you want me picked up at your house and taken to parking shop, that's $20. Wheels on Wheels, we're doing. Every year we have an expo. This year it's October 21st. There's all kinds of vendors there that provide information to seniors. All the way from insurance companies to healthcare organizations. And you can get your, your Blue Shot there. And I guess, I'm hearing now, we might need a booster. Hopefully we can schedule that if that's required. But we really appreciate your support. And I'd like Janet to give you some more information. I think she's on.
I am on. Thanks, Russ. You guys have supported the, our transportation program for several years, so we definitely appreciate that and hope that it will continue. It's, has been in the past $3,000. We've, we've talked a couple of different times about expanding services down there. So we're certainly open to that if that comes back on the table. Our budget for next year is 552,000. And that's just the transportation program. And that's about 70,000 more than we're used to, which is great, except that we have to still come up with that match then. So we have to come up with another 35,000 ourselves. So that's a little bit of a challenge, but we also next year are going to be purchasing some scheduling and dispatching software. So we're very excited about that. We think it'll be, make us much more efficient. And then hopefully we can expand some hours to evening hours and possibly weekends as we get that going.
Wasn't it last year or the year before it was 2000 and was raised to three, Russ?
It's been, I think it's been three for a couple of years.
I was going to say, it's been at least three years because I think we changed that at the end of my third term.
I was kind of hoping for five because as Janice said, we're experiencing, you know, more active, you'd like to encourage more particip- participation within the town. We'd like to get the word out that the cab service is not just for seniors, it's for anybody. And of course, the medical services, I don't, you know about the medical services. If you're, if you're a senior, that would be 60 or older, you can call and pre-schedule if you need to go to the doctor in South Bend or Plymouth, you can schedule that. Now, we'll accept donations, but basically it's, it's paid for through the center. So that's another great service.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
The Council on Aging has also become involved with some of the Crossroads Transportation and Trails Committee. They were kind of instrumental in coming up with some of the crossroads projects. So a good partner to some of the quality of life stuff that we've been working on, on the Crossroads team.
Yeah. Russ, do you have any, like, statistics? How many rides on an average, say, a month?
Janet can give you that.
Okay.
Janice can give you.
Yeah. Submitted a letter, yeah. And last, last year, of course, it was down because of COVID, but we did over 20,000 trips for the county and we did 659 for Culver residents. And that included 42 unduplicated Culver residents. And that's not, you know, we also go to Culver for other people that some people from Plymouth or other areas go down there to the doctor. So that doesn't count any of that, that those are just trips starting in Culver and going to different places.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for us? Janice?
I don't have
We'll take that under advisement.[1797.33] We'll take that under advisement, thank you for coming.
We're asking for five.
I wrote that down.
Thank you.
Next.
Marty.
Visitor Center.
Sure, hi everyone, I'm Marty Ostroban. I'm here today representing the visitors, however, Lake Mexico Visitor Center. Or here with me, who really knows what he's talking about, behind me is man, Katie, he's our executive director of the visitor center. We prepared a, a budget and given it to Karen for you to look at. The visitor centers give you a real brief history, it's been around since twenty fourteen. It is a function of the council, of the town council, who brought us into existence. It's the, it exists in recognition of the importance of tourists and the tourism industry to Culver's economic well-being. It functions as a way to take the day-to-day work off of your plate and run to the plate of people who are focused and have some expertise in promoting tourism. Using tax dollars to promote tourism, that's a pretty common practice for a desert town like Culver. The state of Indiana does it, the Marshall County does it, right? To promote tourism for themselves, and Culver's had the, the great vision to do that for itself since twenty fourteen, through the visitor center. Our twenty twenty-one funding level is seven thousand dollars. The money is used, or the money from you is used for salary and administrative expenses. That's related to the part-time executive director, Matt is our current one. I have a list of duties. That our executive director performs. So. Give you a sense of scope.
Thank you.
Sorry Karen. Need to keep one for myself. As you can see from the budget, we're projecting thirty-one thousand nine hundred in sort of salary and admin. The math behind that is nineteen dollars an hour, twenty-five dollars, every twenty-five hours per week. And then plus expenses that include access to the internet, some promotional activities that we pay for, brochures, tourism brochures, things that go along with the welcome wagon. We're going to be approaching Marshall County Tourism for contribution to that budget. We are not currently supported by Marshall County Tourism in twenty twenty-one, we have done in the past. We have, we believe, county leadership supporting us in that effort for next year, but it's not a given that we will get that funding from. We will be approaching down for whatever gap there is between the thirty-two thousand in our salary and admin budget and what it is to provide us. Best direction from you has been to get the actual ad money for the advertisements and actual promotion from the Culver Redevelopment Commission. We plan to continue following that direction and we'll approach the Culver Redevelopment Commission with our planning plan, right, and our strategy for the, for the twenty twenty-two year. And, you know, continuation of not only the ads, but also a broader branding campaign. So that's about it, you, you received two presentations from us already this year with respect to the visitor center and our accomplishments and. The great work that Matt has done, so I'm not going to belabor a lot of it, or belabor it in front of the public. Other than to say, so far in twenty twenty-one, we, we have a good year in Culver from a tourism standpoint. We've had some successes to celebrate with respect to attracting attention to Culver with, especially the feature on W N U. Well, we see both of us, so. With that, our ask this year is that twenty thousand dollars.
At your request?
Yes.
I'll start with this, Bill, do you have any questions?
Nope. Alex?
No, not really.
William?
Good.
Good. You know, I'm just going to say that, you know, you got to do a heck of a job. And I know you're not getting the support you're feeling you're getting from the county yet, but I know you're working on it and, you know. Culver is tourism destination for Marshall County, we know that. And you guys have done a great job, I don't think your request is out of the line, so we'll take it under advisement and go from there. Do you have anything to go in? I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I think outside of the tourism work that that organization does, they provide a lot of capacity to help sustain the town. And working on things like bring, it's like they did with Stellar, the ready bring process, preserving. It, it builds capacity for us, so to me, there, there is an ROI built into that as well, that a lot of people don't see that.
Right.
But we've had so much involvement from that board and from Matt on some of those processes that we often forget building capacity. For us as the town is an important part of what they do.
Glad, Jenny. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Marty. Man.
Where do you want to go next? Oh, Timbers, okay.
Karen Chu, I'm representing the Secretary of the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce does organize two events every year, the Fall Fest and the Winter Fest. With this, there is no revenue brought into the Chamber at these events, these events are created in order to promote businesses. Having visitors come to town, having more local people come to town and people that'll be year-round residents is what the hope of promoting them. They come here, they see that the town is a walkable place, that they see that you could open a business here in town and that you could strive as a business owner in the town of Culver. So those two festivals, Fall Fest and Winter Fest, we are requesting two thousand of support of developing, promoting, organizing and supervising those events. Under the Chamber supervision for those two events, and then another event that the Chamber organizes with Culver Community Schools is the Jock Fair. And we think with the Jock Fair, that is, we did it last year as the first time, and we hope to make it an annual event that will get more people in the pipeline of working in Culver. With that pipeline, it would hopefully create them being a year-round resident, working here year-round and being a Culver citizen. So a total ask of six thousand, two thousand for each one of those events that the Culver Chamber. Organizes, commits time dues every year. And that's the total ask at this point in time.
Any questions, Rich? What, what was your request, Karen?
Total of six thousand, two thousand for each event.
Six thousand, okay, thank you. Rich, any questions?
I think the only question, Karen, I guess, clarifying that this. It's not a five oh one C three, I believe it's C six. I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that either.
I don't know the answer, but it's not a five oh one C three.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, it's well taken.
Just to make sure that.
On the deliver.
Don't shoot the message.
I'm in town today.
I'm shooting the request like this.
Yeah, and you're just talking about the rest.
Bill, you have any questions?
No charge for that.
Bill, you have any questions? No, I have none, thank you. Sally?
I think all three of those are excellent. You know, for the town of Culver, so, you know, see what we can do. And we'll make Rich research the five oh one C six.
I'll be good, I don't worry.
William?
I'm good, I'm good, as a fan of it, I think it's a great, great initiatives.
Great, thank you.
I support it.
Yeah, the initiatives are good, it's just whether or not, you know. That's right. Thanks a lot, Karen.
Just, I feel that, I think to notify Culver organization, but I'm sure they're going to.
Thank you, guys, thanks Marty.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, thank you, your service.
In terms of priorities, I want you to know I came in before you. I beat him into that.
He was on the front row, it's like being in church, Russ, come on, you know that. You're usually on the front row too.
The camera is what I watch.
There you go. Okay. Wayne, you want to go now? Let's go with Bob. Wayne just wants everybody to be set up before he gets here. We know that.
Yeah, right.
I just know. Go ahead, Bob.
Mine's pretty simple, pretty much salaries went up some for races. Slaying a little bit because prices have increased in the last year. Little smaller items are coming down. Increasing favoring.
How much did it increases then? And pay them? Okay.
Equipment, I stuck twenty thousand in there, we're getting to the point where we need to replace our small dump truck, and that would be a three-day split. And there's for that one. Fifty thousand dollars. Better than that, nothing. Russ?
And the other, just kind of curious pieces of equipment on the horizon that you're gonna?
We do have a street sweeper that's aging and one big plow truck, but I want to replace the big plow truck with smaller plow truck, but I'll do that in the next two or three years.
Okay. Oh, you're saying they'll last that long? Right.
You think that?
Now, obviously, they're aging, so we need to start.
You think that the street sweeper will last?
For the, Bob, for the street sweeper? Because I know you had a issue with it, had to haul it down somewhat.
We had brake problems, we had motor problems, but still, overall, it's still a decent machine.
Okay.
We don't use that daily, we only use it once a week, three times a month, I mean, so it's not. Kind of, I think we can push that one out a little bit.
This isn't a question just for you, but, and I raised it last year and quite honestly, I've done nothing with it since, but I, I wonder if we shouldn't look at going out for a bid on fuel. I know that we split, sort of split it between two of the stations or vendors in town, but I just wonder if we, between yourself, between employees, between EMS, if, the fire department, if we might be able to get a better price if we went out and asked. For a, a bid on those services, recognizing that time of some days will, some.
The only thing with that is you got EPA regulations on how you store it, where you store it.
No, no, I. Okay. You got wholesale, wholesale?
That's where my mind.
You gotta have something like the store.
Yeah, so if you put a tank somewhere, how do you say that Jeff took more than I did, how do you do that? I mean, that's kind of stuff that would be some.
Well, even if we, but even if we purchased it from one vendor, not having it delivered, not, not wholesale that way, but if we said with the, the two providers that are in town currently, BP and Phillips. That we will purchase all of our gas from you, or all of our fuel from you, if we might get a better rate or a discounted rate. And I don't know what they do. Do you know what their margin is? I, not anymore, no. I've been told it's like two or three cents. A gallon. I don't know what it is. That's what Lydia told me. I don't think they have the capacity to negotiate down much more. I mean, I don't, one percent, I don't know, maybe half a percent. This is, I have not done anything to investigate it, I just.
Well, I'm, while I was doing nothing, nothing gained, but that's.
Yeah, we can try it, maybe, maybe I got a bad number. It was a couple of years ago.
Maybe, right, and maybe that, you know.
Maybe she should just.
Karen, do you have any idea, just rough guess, what, for all departments and everything, what we spend a year on fuel?
I, I can come up with it right now, but I can come up with it with it.
I mean, it's not difficult to do, or?
No, it's not difficult to do.
Do you have any wild guess?
I, I'm not going to do it right now, just because it takes a little bit to get to that system and just to keep the music moving, but I can get to it.
Well, twenty twenty, the street department spent seven thousand dollars that year.
And gas prices.
Dollar cheaper.
Gas prices.
It's like twenty-five hundred for me last year. Phillips ten, between the two.
Give me just a minute, I'll look it up.
That's fine.
What do you guys do? Just go in and sign a ticket?
Well, if anything, it creates another extra two or three steps for us, but the credit cards are inside the building, we just got to go in and get it.
Now, we don't pay tax on that though.
That feels smart.
Right.
Fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-five cents for two thousand thirteen, or is?
What was that?
Fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Six ninety-five, six fifty-nine. And that was for calendar year twenty twenty.
And that's for all the departments.
That is for all, that is basically the two gas companies.
Two guys.
Yeah. I was gonna say, yes. But it doesn't hurt to.
Yeah, your numbers, it came down to about twenty-five, so that's, okay, but if that's what we actually spent, that's fine.
And then we're also looking at anticipated increased gas prices anyway.
That was, gas was a dollar cheaper last year too.
Or more, so.
Anybody having questions for Bob? Rich?
Yeah.
No.
William?
No, sir. Good.
No, I just want to see that other way. That, just kind of.
I talked to them today and he's giving me a list of questions, I'll give them from between vacations on both sides, they might not get them both.
Okay, thank you. And this is going to end the goal for. I will shut up.
Jenny, you got any questions?
No.
Thank you, Rob. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
Wayne? Pardon? We'll go over each other, just worried, I mean, maybe we were about, some had a change. Go ahead.
Probably did not pay for that because we're given. Gas. A little bit, obviously, some rising prices. More. Last year, seventy-three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And the issue, I have raised it up, the cost of it, obviously, on the last year. Other supplies, kept it the same, hosting stayed the same. Telephone. Raised it a little bit. I think over last year.
What's up about the telephone?
Other than on cell phone is just general.
General, okay, so cell phones, okay, thank you. And you got a twelve thousand in there for the new?
Golf cart?
Or is that twelve thousand for the golf cart?
Working my way down here. That's a lot.
I understand that there's nothing in between those two. Tires. With an increase.
Yes, car run up. I anticipate just the cost factor. I called just one place just to see, hey, what do you think cars are gonna cost?
No.
Totally, so I just add a little bit to it. Because you never know what you're gonna get trade, but hopefully, you know, obviously, those are going up.
Trade, yeah, used cars are up.
You know, we'll get a good trade out of it.
Some of them more, more expensive than the new.
Right, that's it, that's right.
So we hope it balances itself out. Some degree, and yes, I had ten thousand on for a golf cart.
On the, on the benefits section, at least on Karen's initial report, it shows a decrease of twenty-four thousand dollars, is that?
Correct, yes, and I actually double checked it.
Okay, good.
When we, when we were budgeting for the office, or we didn't know what's the health plan situation that we was selling.
It is raised up, but we just kept it the same. We just don't, we don't know.
Okay. And if one of them true, it's a, it's a good estimate.
All the rest didn't mean, stayed the same for much. Which is a, basically a total of two million, one hundred, probably eight thousand. I had two million for a building.
Didn't even notice.
I don't see that figure there, so.
It's up twenty-one thousand, one seventy-five, total, it's a four percent.
Rich, you got any questions?
Nope.
William? Where's the golf cart?
It's in the car.
That and that. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Okay.
I think we estimated ten thousand for the golf cart.
Yeah, okay.
Just did a quick Google search.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Adding graphics to it.
Sally?
Fine.
Good.
And I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, Wayne.
Man of the hour.
Yeah.
Well. My game here is twenty-one. I pushed out a big increase. Y'all took a gamble. And when I told you in twenty twenty that I was gonna stay within budget, my goal was still to stay within the budget for twenty twenty-one. While we had some variety of issues. We also had increased costs, and so with that, I've been trying to adjust other areas that I have within the budget, so I don't have to come back to you and ask for any type of additional appropriations, because I, as well as you do, believe in not doing additional appropriations. With that said, there are times where unfortunately that does happen. So with the twenty twenty-two budget, I looked at a lot of different factors. And we'll start with, the first thing is salaries. Salaries, I'm asking for an increase of twenty thousand, eight fifty-five or six percent. This is you, this will be used to further cover holiday pay, extra training, and maintenance of fixed in-house. That will also cover additional covers throughout the year for special events and for high call volume events that we have like Blakeface that starting to trend throughout each year, but it's still a difficult year to trend some of these things, because as things start to open back up with the pandemic, not everything is to move back to the pandemic's level. So to do that, I'm trying to be proactively approaching next year with additional staffing on those high call volume days. So as we increase the amount of people within the community, it also increases the incidents that could possibly happen. And so in doing so, that's where I've adjusted the salaries as well. Now, there again, there's also many factors that go into salaries that are not able to be determined, whether it's call offs, whether it's injuries. And so there is a slight buffer in there to allow to have some absorption with that, so moving forward with that. And so that is why my increase of twenty thousand, eight fifty-five or six percent is where it is at current. After talking today with Karen, longevity went up just a slight bump. And then we get to benefits. Benefits is the biggest jump that I'm requesting. And it is a ninety-two percent increase. Part of that is, is when we added a fourth person, we didn't add the benefits to it last year. And so we had to add to this year, and to further that, I want to bring on two more people. Now, benefits by far is the biggest and reoccurring cost that we have. This is to provide continual coverage and ALS service as needed. I'm going, the ongoing pandemic and unreliable workforce are driving this more. The servant, this is service wide and nationwide. This puts us in danger of providing twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year coverage. We are too dependent on part-time staff and adding, adding money as into increasing the rates even higher for wages isn't going to solve the answers both of all. It may attract a few people, but part-time help is not dedicated help. They're either working another full-time job somewhere else, or in-between jobs, or a variety of different scenarios. And what we need is a constant dedicated workforce that is here, is able to work when we need it to work, and not be dependent on their schedule or their other job, that they may wanna work more overtime, or they get injured, or something else happens to them. This allows us more, more structure and more accountability when it comes to that. And like I said, this allowing, having a full-time staff allows the department to function more structurally accountable. Continually down this path jeopardizes our function and our service reliability. Over the last several months, we have had this challenge time and time again, and it's becoming more of a ongoing than it is erratic. And when I say that is open shifts. When we have a, two-thirds of the department or more than half the department dependent on part-time, we rely on their schedule at times. Sure, we can mandate some flexibility or mandate more time, but at the end of the day, we have to find the workforce. And so part of that is a juggling act during this pandemic, because A, I don't wanna over push or oversell or over demand on the workforce in an already very demanding, very overworked schedule. All the people that are working are working in the same field. So it's not like I can just go to the store or go to the, the want ads and, and ask for a whole bunch of people. It's a very limited workforce. And so doing this and increasing this over time will help us secure a better foundation and more dedicated workforce and more structured workforce moving forward. And so that is why I'm requesting the additional ninety thousand within that budget. Yes, that will continue on. And it will be a reoccurring cost, but projecting out into the next two years, I only, I only project a five percent increase in twenty-three's budget and a four percent increase in twenty twenty-four's budget moving forward. Because of some of these fixed costs that I have are gonna, or some of these one-time costs in this budget will not be there next year. As I stated when I came here in twenty twenty, a lot of things weren't necessarily mismanaged or anything like that, but they weren't addressed in a timely manner. So now we're trying to play catch-up on a lot of various different things. Some of that is equipment, some of that is workforce, some of that is payroll. A lot of those things, we could have adjusted over time, and maybe it wouldn't be that big of a, a bite to some of you, but it is something that we could, that I plan on addressing more as a long-term solution and moving forward than trying to take big chunks every year. Being in government for twenty-eight years, I know too well the restraints that government has, the finances and limited, the limited amount of money, and so I don't take this increase as a frivolous spending or asking for something more than what we need. These are things that we actually need and to build upon on. The next item is office supplies, just some slight increases to those based upon current spending habits that's been going on and also trending prices that are not going down, they're more trending upward. Gasoline, I have increased that slightly with thought of gasoline prices going up. We're starting to see that, even though we're down a little bit, it doesn't necessarily mean that it can't be more than that. It's just the nature of our business. The more we run, the more gas we use. Medical supplies, we're looking and holding very well with those, and with last year's purchases, we're actually, we stabilized a little bit, so this is what's allowing me to have a little bit more flexibility with overages and some other line items to use for, i.e. the maintenance that we did on Culver One, it was over seven thousand dollars. So that blew out the budget completely. So those items will be used to address part of that and still be able to function hopefully within our budget like I plan on doing. Then we go to uniforms. Uniforms is my next biggest jump. That is because we need to have proper uniforms for the staff. When I started here, we have, we had department members that didn't have the appropriate weather, the appropriate clothing for cold, wet, all different types of season weather. I tried last year, I tried this year, bought some incremental things, but I need to get everyone outfitted out and the appropriate clothing. And so this is a one-time cost. Sure, we'll have reoccurring uniform cost, but the cost for this is increased by seven thousand to help off, to offset that. Other supplies are related in there are just been increased because of ongoing pandemic pricing. Everything is gonna stay up and it's gonna maintain that in my view, and so that's just the, the buffer zone to cover normal household environments from dishwasher tabs, normal cleaning supplies around the station. Training material, increase in that. In this year, looking at our training material and, and looking at the workforce, some of it was done remotely. Now we're gonna start moving more in-house and looking at updating several of the things, and so I'm thinking incremental moves to increase and update the training and educational material that we have. And so that's the, the slight increase in those as well. Those are just in the supplies. The next, the other services and charges, legal fees. We had an increase in legal fees, and I feel next year we will have another increase in fees related to, you know, ongoing issues with us. Could have less. We may not have to need that, but there again, it's, it's something I wanna prepare for and not be underprepared for. Telephone, just a slight increase in that. Travel and expenses, uh, just as, uh, uh, increase in that, since we're having that increase. Advertising stays the same. Insurance and bonds staying the same, unless Karen would happen to have something changed, but I've not had anything on that. Electrical and gas is staying right there in the same. Water and sewer staying the same. Repairs and maintenance, a slight bump in that. It's not there to cover all the expenses, but it's there to cover a majority of things. We're gonna need new tires on the vehicles next year. And I'm trying to push off all repairs on Culver One until we get rid of it and trade it in, so I'm trying to nurse that one along to prevent any further major prices in there through this year. But depending on how long we hold on to it, the first quarter of next year, we may have that, so it's an anticipation of a little bit more maintenance cost on those. Rentals, there is none. Soft water stays the same. Lease purchase went down. Instruction stayed the same. Contractual services stayed the same. Machinery and equipment stayed the same, or actually, excuse me, went up. Two thousand. And the next other biggest increase is radios. I've talked to you before, this year at the beginning of the year. The main radio on the learning system went out at the station, so I had to hamstring it together and do some things, some needed repairs, and had some pricing, replacing the system, upgrading the system, which is all, all that's needed. That's why there's an increase of that one as well of seventeen nine sixty-five, seventy-eight to do that, and there again, that is a one-time cost. Then we get to building repairs, same, same goes for that, is the same, which means a, a total of six ninety-nine, seven hundred and seventy-eight. An overall increase of a hundred and five, three twenty, seventy-eight, or an overall increase of eighteen percent.
Do you have a question on, on legal fees? Are those collections, is that? Which, yes, okay, that's a question for legal fees.
We've had more collections this year than we've had in previous years.
And on the, um, contractual services, a year to date, we're at thirty, three twenty. Asking again for the thirty thousand. Do we have a run out to the end of the year that's going to, close to that thirty? Do you know on contractual services?
Yes, there are. A lot of that is dependent on bills that go out. It's part of our payment structure with billing company. And so those fluctuate. It's also contractual services, the maintenance contracts that we have, that will come in over time that haven't come in yet because they're not due. It goes to the software version as well, so these are all costs that are built in there, that I don't see any additional costs moving forward, that these costs will be used of.
On the, you said that you needed to repair the system inside the EMS? Radio system. What's the cost on that?
That cost is seventeen nine sixty-five, seventy-eight.
What one, what was that under?
Radios.
Second.
Under the radios?
Four forty-two.
And how many radios were you looking at purchasing?
Two more radios at the final, and then we're done with radios. All we have left is the radio and Culver Two, if you so call it. Everything else is being upgraded with the new ambulances comes in. So, you know, once again, this is another cost that can be shaved down in twenty-three.
Bill, do you have anything?
I just wanna add that you mentioned one-time costs. They're really not one-time costs. They're long-term costs.
Okay.
Eventually, you're gonna need uniforms again.
Exactly. But it won't be for a while.
Right, 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 just.
How many people are you outfitting with that?
Twenty.
So you're getting twenty?
Twenty jackets.
Okay.
Um. Uniform pants, shirts, sweat, polos, stuff like that.
Okay.
Come on, the days of, here's a shirt that somebody else wore, here's a sweatshirt. A lot of the stuff now just is single use.
Of the benefit cost increase, which is the, the largest bump, and I understand the rationale behind it, but do you know what we're actually committed to at this point in time for understanding of that? Basically, ninety thousand dollar increase. Basically $90,000 increase. How much of that is already committed by the changes we've made in staffing? You know? If that might clear.
So current staffing with the, the three, the time of what is that 3,515? I just, I instructed Jeff to just use a figure of 33,000 for benefits. And there's also maybe adding, not much of anything next year, but another 11, 12,000 per person.
Sorry, I'm not following the map on that.
Okay.
So, so the increase you're saying is 30, about 33,000 per person?
Per person for benefits.
Right, benefits is what we're talking.
Right, well, I'm, okay. Adding, I apologize. Specifically for health insurance, for insurance benefits. Okay, so if you're looking at benefits as a whole, um, then you're also looking at probably another five to $6,000 to pay for perk, which is the retirement. And then it would be some, I don't have the exact contribution for taxes.
Okay, alright, so.
And then on top of that, when we figured out the 2021 budget.
Okay, so I, so I, I realize that it's more than the, the 30, just for, the 30 is for just that.
Just the health benefits.
Okay, but we're jumping 60 and I thought you said we were adding one person, adding the fourth person. Why, that's why it increased. So why is it?
Well, he's got, he's asking for two. Well, we, we've already approved one, a fourth full-time person. But that, but we just had the benefits this year. So I added benefits for that person and a fifth person.
Okay, so part of the jump was because we added the fourth person. But then there's another person on top of that. That's why we're at $60,000 rather than, okay. A following, that makes more sense.
Sorry.
No problem.
My brain is moving faster than my.
No, I just, it just, I was, it was just not computing.
I hate to be, uh, act stupid, but how much was the radio system inside the building? Again?
17,965.
Basically just, just add 18. It's 17,965.
Yeah, that's what I, I thought he said 17, you know, 100. And when I wrote it down, it, it came out as 18,000.
Go club and do you have any?
Seems excessively high to me.
Are you done?
No, I said that seems excessively high to me.
It's the radio and the alerting system. The alerting system is a little over 5,000 when you put in the speakers and everything like that. And so it's a, it's a complete system. So it's not only just the radio, it's the actual antennas and all of that to alert it. The alerting system's on the VHF side and the radio's on the 800 side. So it's, it's a complete package for the whole entire thing.
Who are you? Is that through Motorola?
Jeff, um, walk me through your, your request for two more full-time people. And how does that, how will that impact your scheduling?
Add a few more people will dramatically stabilize the schedule. And when I say stabilized, it's that currently exists. I'm wondering that the way I can speak, but that is because of a variety of factors of a part-time staff. And so when we have two-thirds of the department being part-time, we're at, I don't want to say at their mercy, but we have limitations that we have. Um, so when you have a full-time staff, you have better control, better structure, better control over the schedule than what you have to where the part-time staff, if I'm part-time and I'm working another job and I'm like, well, I want to go on vacation. I want to go do this, I want to go do that. Uh, I, I don't have, I'm not necessarily committed to work on a part-time job. Because of that status. And so workforce is not as stable as it was a year, year and a half ago. If you would have asked me this, December was last year here, I would have never thought it would be this bad or would be getting this bad. But it is a, it's a forecast that I believe is just going to get worse. And to make sure that we have this 24/7, we need to be proactive and not reactive. And then if we don't, then we're going to be facing larger amounts of overtime. And then the full-time staff that's picking up that overtime will just learn to be burned out. And then, then, then we're dealing with other issues. And so then we deal with them being burned out, them getting injured, something's happening. When we have those factors, then we have safety. And so we can't rely on the full-time staff to always pick up the load of everything because we will never even retain people in there. The people that want to come here, for the, to want to work, I have several part-timers that want full-time because they like the benefits. They would increase the amount of hours they put in because they'd be going to full-time. So they would be adding more hours that they have to put in.
What, how, how do you define, or how do we define full-time? I mean, how many hours is that? Is it by payroll period? Is it a month? Is it 40, is it 48? Based upon your staffing, what is, you know, what is that contribution?
Uh, part-time is, full-time is 48.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours a week. Uh, part-time is basically anything under 36. So, but, yeah, we've had some people that have worked and we have, we have a lot. Ron has been instrumental on a lot of different times throughout this year. Um, because if, if wasn't for like Ron, uh, you know, it would, there would, there would be more overtime. And what I'm trying to do is reduce the overtime cost. So it's either, we can either have the overtime and have more, have more risks or we can have the, the full-time and reduce that risk, reduce the chances and then have that stable workforce. And our benefit package is by far the best around, I believe. Um, and that's what attracts the people in our part-time staff to want to come full-time, is that they like the benefit package. But they're working other places, um, as well. And they'd be willing to come here because of the benefits.
What's your turnover, uh, rate for?
Turnover right now was four people this year. Uh, I have three more that will be going in the coming months. There are three of them that are in school, going in different paths ultimately. And so it is a, like I said earlier, it's a very limited workforce. It's a very small group when we talk about paramedics. There is roughly, you know, 4,500 paramedics in the state of Indiana. So you do that, do the math, it's, it's not that, it's not that many. And, uh, there is not that many in this community. And so we're pulling people from outside. And then when we pull those people from the outside and that, and they're part-time, there's, there's no commitment. There's no, there's no, uh, loyalty in a sense. But there becomes some when you have them part-time because you have a little bit more control over things. So you have that ability to drive that workforce in many different ways, whether it's the structure, whether it's the training, whether it's the accountability. But when you have the part-time, you are faced with a uncertain workforce that fluctuates month to month, day to day. And there's no, there's no commitment. We're not a department that's geared up for people that are off long-term. And we've been struggling here this last couple of months with long-term, uh, issues with people. And so those are hard for us to deal with because we're not a, we're not a big department. And so then it becomes another issue amongst itself.
Well, the other thing is, um, job seekers, or job seekers are not enough to supply the demand for, uh, employees. Or players, I mean, employers. So that's going to get worse.
And, and, and people are, are, people are leaving here, I don't say here, but people are leaving in this profession to go to another job for a dollar more.
Right.
And, you know, it's, it's, it's a worker's market in a sense.
Yep.
And our only, our only saving grace is benefits. And because frankly, a lot of the areas around us, their benefits are 10 times higher than what we are.
Does that you employee satisfaction? But you mean by the employee contribution portion of the.
Correct, yes, correct. Employee contribution.
Low cost.
You know, and that, and, and then you talk about those costs. You talk about that, the cost that we have. You know, for, for money, those people, it's 10 times the cost just for medical. And so, and we offer all three. And so when, when they hear, when they see that, yeah, that's, that makes more sense. And, uh, then you add in the little recall volume, you add in some other things. It, it becomes very attractive to certain people, but it doesn't always stay attractable to the part-time people. And so.
Jeff, I have a question about, um, we've talked about, there are several of these part-time people that will say, I'll do one shift this month. Right? And we invest or we're even, we invest uniforms. To me, if we hired another full-time or two or whatever the case is, can we eliminate these one-shift people and not invest a radio and not invest uniforms? Because, you know, we're spending a lot of money, if we had to buy 20 sets of uniforms, when that guy, uh, you know, four of them.
The return.
Yeah, four of them.
Yeah, right. Exactly. I mean, when you're spending, you know, thousand, $1,500 to outfit somebody, um, for one time, you know, you're not getting, like you, you told me, said many times in the meeting today here, return on investment.
Yeah.
And we like, and that's what goes with structure, accountability and all that.
And when you have all those open shifts and that guy is never volunteering to do more, it seems pointless to have one-shift people on our roster. You know, it's a waste of your time to even make the call. You know, they're not going to say yes. And yet we've put money into them. And that to me, as we've been talking about these issues.
Yeah, it's a waste. Well, not to mention the turnover and the training, as it is all the turnover and all the other costs that go along with.
And they don't keep up with me, you know, if they're only here once a month, they also don't know our addresses and what house to go to. We've run into that sort of thing, right? They're just not familiar enough with the community.
That's right.
Um, as you would hope they would be in such a small community, but there's so many issues surrounding this. The county, all of the services have been getting together at the county level because this is a huge problem across the county. Argus can't even staff. And they went to a fire territory to try to deal with this issue. And what the other issue we find is when we have a second call come in, well, the guys are out on a call and a second call comes in, oftentimes Plymouth can't be there. And so our own DLS fire service is taking that second call. You see, they're understaffed in all these other towns as well. It's not just us. So that this has become such a big problem across the state that it's really a tough one to travel with. Not that I'm, you know, saying we should increase this budget 100,000. I'm just, there's so many issues that I think we all need to be aware of.
Going back to your, going back to your, the, the schedule that you're referring to or what I asked the question, I assume it's your August schedule. So you, let me get this straight. You've got 38 open spots right now?
It's down to 20 spots now.
How many?
Down to 20 spots.
25?
Twenty.
Twenty?
It started off, um, glad I was gone. And now I've been able to wiggle a little leg since I came back from vacation. And so, um, beg, borrowing and pleading, getting people that work the one shift to, hey, can you help us out? Can you work more? But the biggest problem is, is that we had three turnovers within 30 days. That, um, you know, it, it, it devastates us. And I've had, uh, job postings, state level, media, uh, through Indeed. And I've gotten just a, a couple. And so I'll be interviewing a couple next week, but it doesn't mean that that's going to solve, you know, the problem. They could sit there and say, I want work, but until the interview comes, they may want to work one day, two day. And, you know, it, it's, it's hard because they're not like, they're not like Ron. They're not sitting around, you know, they're not retired and they have extra time to give. Where Ron helps out tremendously. Ron's my go-to guy. If I have something that happens overnight or something that happens last minute, nine times out of 10, Ron helps me out. But, uh.
So what would that, okay, if you had the, if you had the two full-time people this month? So you've got 20 spots.
Everything would be filled if I had the two full-time people.
That's my question. Out of the words?
Yeah, we're going to still need a little bit of part-time, but, um, the two full-time people would dramatically change the scheduling and fill the void that we need to fill, um, to maintain that kind.
And how would that impact overtime?
Uh, well, here's the thing is that money is there for 90% of that. You know, it's that 16 hours of overtime that they have, that there again, it's easier to give that to a part-timer that's, uh, not making overtime wage than give it to another person that's going to be making overtime on top of it. So, uh, you know, there is, there's that offset. And so we reduce that, that, that issue. So we have the money in the, in the budget to pay the salaries. What we just don't have is we don't have the money for the benefits. And having that shores up everything. And what Jenny was alluding to is, is the next thing is like charting. Charting, we went to a new software. We went to the new software for a variety of reasons. And so then it's hard to get chart corrections corrected when I have to wait a month for someone to come back that's been gone for a month, that I need the chart fixed. Or, you know, I want to roll out new things. It's hard to get people trained when they are part-time and when they're not always available.
When you have charting issues, does that impact revenue?
Yes, it delays everything. When you have to hold a chart for, you know, a couple of weeks, month, yeah, that delays everything. And, uh, you know, we're, we already face, you know, like about a 16-day window typically for, uh, you know, for returns to come back. And that necessarily doesn't mean they're going to come back in full force. So it's, you know, there's, there's other struggles that go on top of it. You know, it's, we, uh, we have an academy that has multinational seats. And we, we get limited information, but it requires me to then track down more information on these people because all we get is a name. We don't necessarily always get a name, the address, all that. And so it takes more time to track some of that information down. And so there, and that leaves the chart incomplete. When you fly people out from the seat, track people down for information, it, it takes time. And so all of these things are factors that go along with it. And, you know, part of the new software brought in a new level of accountability for us that I'm striving for in the very beginning. And then what, what I did when I wanted to get the new software is to drive better patient care, is to have better metrics, to have things to look at moving forward. And as we move into next year, we get more of those metrics that go along. But part of that is used to help with ongoing, uh, continuing education. You know, in, in the medical field, we, we, we have a lot of different metrics that we gauge by, from not only our response times, but to how soon do we put somebody on the cardiac monitor? How soon do we reverberate somebody? How often do we go to certain residents? What kind of calls do we go on? So we actively plan and prepare the department for those types of needs. And, but there again, having the workforce the way it is, it doesn't allow for adequate training. You know, it's, it's hard to get people to come in for training when they're part-time working other jobs and the days that they're working are the days that are there. And sure, we can have a lot of. When they're part-time working other jobs and the days that they're working are the days that are there. And sure, we can have a lot of. Uh, training that is somewhat remote or digitalized information they can look at or review. But it's only good if they really want to do it. Some of the education needs to be. Right there in front of them, you know, right there, uh, face to face. So you, you get them, they get the message you're trying to deliver. And so the rollout of the new software, planned a month, two and a half months, roll out all the training territory. And, you know, but then there's been six months here of continual training because, you know, there's a learning curve. But how do you get that learning curve to people that only work a couple of days, only get a couple of calls? And so there's, 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 there's a period of time where it'd be great, wonderful if everyone was here every, you know, every, you know. Every third day or every, you know, every other day. And they get the call volume, they get the, the learn, you know, you get the muscle memory. But when we don't have that, you know, it, it, it creates a whole variety of different obstacles that we have to deal with or that I have to deal with. And so that's why the push is there for the more full-time staff.
I'm gonna go to the other side of the ledger and talk about Acumen and how they've. Either stepped up their game or helped you over the last couple of years and in collections. How is that?
Acumen has been very good, very well receptive to the changes that we made into this year here with. The new, the new rates and working on collections better and reducing their fees. Um, there was a two-month period of time of getting the whole new software and the new, and the run reports to them.
Right.
We got that worked out, but that was something that was expected during this whole shift. And so that has been, has been excellent. And of the, uh, the charts that have been sent to them, eighty-some. Uh, there was only one chart that was sent back with the wrong information that needed to be, um, updated. There's just a minor little issue. And so. Uh, you know, those things, they're working, they're working hard for their money. And so, uh, but that's gonna be.
And you're getting more money because of that.
That's gonna, we're gonna be, that's gonna be another topic for next year as to how much. We're not gonna, you, you know, we, we changed the. Uh, the, the, their service charge for that down to six point six percent. And so, uh, we're not necessarily gonna see like a windfall. Of additional money from them, but what we are seeing is them working harder to get that money to where before. It was like, okay, here's your service charge and, you know, we'll get it when we get it. Now for them to get their percentage, they gotta get it, they gotta get it processed and get it out.
Karen, I guess a question related to that on the, um, on the revenue. For twenty twenty, um, and this is located in the emergency medical services fee. I'm just gonna close our selection.
Correct. I split it out. I don't, I haven't done that in the past, but I thought it's like helpful for you to see where the money comes from. Where, where you have the medical services and that with the money collected from the. Correct. And yet you've got the EMS unit.
Right.
And then the.
And so for twenty twenty, it shows that our EMS actions, their services. And then the estimated number for this year, um, was seventy-three and we're projecting for next year seventy-five thousand.
And again, that going back to my, what I said every year is low-ballot.
No, no, I understand that, but I mean, I think.
Cause I don't, you don't know what, how many runs you're gonna have.
Yes, um, but it, it's basically showing that for this year, um, we're probably at this seventy-three number. And that's a little over halfway through the year.
It, it, it just depends on how many, you know, again, you can't forecast how many runs and what they'll be for. Because they may have, you may have runs that you hadn't collected for from two years ago that all of a sudden show up.
Right.
You know, next month. So it's a, it's kind of hard to project.
So we started the year rich with an outstanding, uh, you know, hold me to these numbers because I've looked at so many different spreadsheets. In an outstanding debt of, or money owed of about sixty-six thousand. And so, um, but that's. Uh, total cost. Now, there's a lot of factors that go into it, which we, we can briefly go over, we have the payer mix. And that breaks down how, how our community is set. And our payer mix is sixty-five. Sixty percent is Medicare, Medicaid, and then the other forty is based upon self-pay and commercial insurance. And so sixty percent of our runs are at a basically half the rate that we normally charge. And so that's driving sixty percent of the cost. So like when I, when I came up with the things last year. Is that, you know, it roughly costs us a thousand dollars to go out the door. Okay, it's gonna go up a little bit here if you approve this budget. But the true benefit is you need to have two or three runs a day. And, but when we don't have any runs a day, it, it doesn't help us at all. But that's part of the business there. You know, we're not in a business to make money, um, even though we try to, to get as much revenue as we can.
And I mean, our costs are fixed outside of some disposables.
Right, right.
Um, maybe major cost fees, the benefits and staffing, that's fixed because you have to staff to that level whether you call it out or not.
Exactly, exactly. And I'm looking at more of a, a revenue this year of being closer up to the one fifty. Is where I'm at. And granted, there have been some setbacks with some things here. And there again, it goes to payer mix. But, you know, I look for us to trend a little bit higher, uh, because our call volume is increasing. Um, and so, but it doesn't necessarily always mean that it's gonna be that, but it's, um. I feel with the new software, with the new way we're going things, we're gonna get less runs that are billed at a lower rate instead of where they needed to be. Where we were before. But that's gonna take time for that to come in. And so you can have, you can, you can wait up to six months for some of these, these claims to process through a variety of different things. And, uh.
Do you know, do you know where we are with that, that, um, um, I guess the receivables and, and its aging? So you said at the beginning of the year, it was about sixty, six thousand dollars.
That one I'd have to, to go into more because it's, it's not like something I can go onto a computer today and say, hey, oh, yeah. This is, this is where it's at because Acumen doesn't keep it that way. They've had to create a variety of new, new, uh, things for me to, to grasp from. But I can't get that information.
Are they able to give you that age year?
Yes, they're, they're.
These are about eighty days out.
Yes, they're able to give me that, but it's not, it's not something that we really track on our end. Um, that's more like year-end report stuff that I plug in, um, to stuff like that.
I mean, that, that will, that helps you weigh or, or factor in how much of that is, is likely to be collected.
Right.
Because of its age.
Yeah, and then it also then boils down to the bad debt that's written off because of, of non-payment or. Collections or whatnot that has to be paid.
Someone asked me the question, if the fire department is going on a run and tries to be LS, is there. Do we need no charging for that?
No, there's no charging for that, no.
Is it, is it because they don't?
They don't transport.
Okay, it's only the transport.
Then they're also not geared for that type of service.
That's fine.
They are basically, they are a BLS non-transport department and they're basically what's called first responders. And so they are there if you, if you're up maintenance, um, to help us and to be a stopgap when we're not available. To be able to render aid to people like when we do have back-to-back calls or three calls, which. You know, it's not necessarily something that we can trend, but in this last month, there have been several occasions where we've had back-to-back calls. We've had three calls within fifteen minutes. And I was working the other day, we had three calls, I was at the academy. Um, with a patient and Plymouth had to come up for, for both of us.
Is there anything that can be done to that standpoint with that BLS service to get? Someone on the fire department at that level to train to be a driver or, you know, or transport or something? Am I barking up a tree or that I shouldn't be or?
It would take a, a, a whole different type of certification. Um, and then it could just be, it would just add a whole nother cost structure to the system.
But they would have to go through that. I mean, obviously a fireman would have to go through that training, but would that equate to an additional stipend if that? Person were able to do that? I'm just trying to figure out some way to help you through them.
To make it a billable service.
Yeah. I mean, is that something to, to? Put on the table to try to get somebody over there to, to do that. I.
We could.
Cause it's not gonna happen that often, but when you need it, you need it. And if somebody's not coming down to help. You know, and somebody here could do it, is it a benefit? Obviously it's a benefit, but I mean, how many hoops do you have to jump through to?
Several hoops to that. Now, on the billable side for some other runs, it'd be something I would need to sit down and talk to Terry about. And we could do for things like refusals and, and things like that that we would normally charge for. That if they go out, they don't charge for because they're not geared up to that system. They're, they're, they have no way of actually billing that service out.
Okay.
We have that ability, but we can't bill for someone else.
Right, I, I got that.
Two different entities.
Okay.
And, uh, but we could definitely look at that, but there again, I don't know if there would ever be enough run or enough volume for them. Even to have that. I mean, we're talking, um, you know, it's, it's, it's far and few between.
I, I understand that, but is it better to have it and not need it than the need or not have it? That's.
Well, I think.
Being that simple of why.
I think the, the best thing that we had was this year is moving forward with them. Uh, because it helps, it helps the crews here. It helps them. Um, it allows us to where if we have a bad patient, they can, one of their firemen can drive the ambulance soon. And the MTA and the paramedic can work in the back and get it taken care of, um, and that extra set of hands. And so those things do help us.
Any other questions from anyone? Sure, go ahead, Joyce.
Um, you had said earlier about. In the future years, we would have, like, maybe you are estimating maybe a four percent. And was that a four percent increase of two thousand and twenty's budget? Or two thousand and twenty-two's budget, two thousand and twenty-one's budget?
I figured twenty-two is five percent.
Yeah.
This is.
Karen?
Yes?
I was just looking on your general fund. Um, our Pulaski County contract.
Yeah, that should be six thousand five hundred, I think, yes.
Pardon?
That should be six thousand five hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's already pointed out to me, it was a.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so but if you're doing these five percent increases, you're doing that on a five percent increase. Of all of these one-time charges too?
No, that was taken out. That's why they'll.
I was just trying to get them to be able to have a BLS guy drive a, your driver. That's all I was trying to get.
Well, if they have somebody that's BLS, they could drive. But if they're first responders.
But that's what, and then we're back into that, you know, the part-time on all situations.
Yeah. Well, the only thing I, I say is that. Like when Plymouth comes down, we don't get any revenue. Uh, you know, somebody comes in, we don't get revenue now. Well, we go to Plymouth, we get the revenue from Plymouth. But, um, um. How much, how much revenue could they create? I, I'm just saying is I don't know how much revenue they'd be able to create if they were the, the second.
Well, pre, some years, and it all depends.
Yeah.
On the year, but I mean, we used to have probably. Over the entire year, thirty double calls.
Right, yeah.
So, you know. Thirty times. If they weren't Medicare.
Well, what do you wanna do? I mean, you tell me, if we've done everybody, if any other answer, everyone's right.
Right, um, well, CCV.
I'm sorry.
That's where the sidebar program comes on a.
Right.
And nobody else says.
We should probably address that. I've got the MBAs that, I've, basically budgeting the, the money that we're planning on getting. So there's been, uh, we need to go down. So like we'd be able to budget fifty-three, two quarters.
Right, that's all right.
Re-surfacing or local roads and streets, we should be getting sixteen thousand one fifty-four.
Okay.
So I just went ahead and. And then those two, together, those two together, we'll, we'll. In the street budget, that would be what we can use for, yes, um, uh, community crossings.
Sure.
Should get, get done over.
The riverboat is really the only one we're hurting, we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah, so.
If we're gonna do something for boys and girls, is that what you're saying?
Well, and that's where, like, the Boys and Girls Club comes from, and that's where the. The regional, or the county council of meetings comes from. And then we do, we committed one thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars to, to maintain and engage. And that comes out of the riverboat as well.
And we ain't got, we don't have any money there.
Well, we're, I'm, I'm guessing that money's gonna, I don't know that I've seen a, a estimate of what it's going to be. It might have been, just three thousand may have been a guess, just but, but there was no gain last year.
Right.
So, you know, the, the receipts from that are went down. Um, but there is, I mean, there's money in that fund. So it's not like.
We have any more? Yeah, well, now that. Joyce, are you happy now? And that's not a smart remark, I mean.
No, he can't have questions, so I, I just.
Do you have any other questions is, is really the next thing? Since we've been going around up here, do you have more topics that you wanna need to?
No, the question that I asked Jeff that I didn't ask the whole board was, you know. If we had to decrease, where would you be comfortable doing that? That's the only question I asked.
If we what?
If we need us to decrease this one-time budget, where would you be most comfortable decreasing money? So, but other than that, he answered my question.
Okay.
What was his? Sorry.
Instead of six percent, it was a three percent. And then I also told Joyce as well is that as the rest of this year plays out. Some of these items that I'm still a little heavy on, I might be able to do some of these one-time costs this year. If things line up, but I don't wanna over-commit to something and not be able to. Do what I'm trying to accomplish. And so with that being the case, that could help lead the budget for, for next year. Well, by dropping some of those one-time costs.
Right.
And then if you wanna use any of that ARP money, you know, that's, that's good one-time cost.
My answer.
Unless you wanna take on the paperwork.
Unless you wanna take, do what?
Unless you want to take, unless someone else wants to take on the paperwork and reporting. One project. Sorry. I know you.
Okay, anybody else got any? Questions? For Jeff?
I do think while we're researching the grant.
I do think while we're researching grant possibilities for the fire department, I'll keep an eye on if there's any opportunities, like, I mean, they need radios, they need uniforms.
I think that goes with I seen it staying, but you're right. You know, wherever we can get grant money, we need to go for it.
Those always take time and research.
I know they do, I know they do.
Unfortunately, there's not a lot of those out there for emergency services. Maybe because of COVID, we'll see some of that happen in the next year. Maybe some federal dollars will come through.
But I think, I mean, it's wrapped a lot of those into the, if it was ARPA, I think. And so I don't know. Anyone? Does the fear of catching COVID have any impact on morale or has it need to go out?
Well, COVID's an interesting beast. I know that the variant is now the most common thing that's out there. Yes, is there fear, a little bit of fear, well, we'll say fear is the word, but there's, there's worry. That's something that we're gonna address tomorrow in the meetings, talk about COVID-related issues and moving forward. Because, you know, that is, that's a concern for me. We had, I had COVID last year. There was a couple of other people that had COVID. And it is a concern for me scheduling-wise, because it's, it's a known fact. It's just like anything when it comes to illness or injuries, you just don't know.
How many people are vaccinated?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent?
Fifty percent.
Any of the larger services or other services mandate?
No, nobody's mandated now that I know of, departmental lines. And there again, that, that goes along with our township. You know, the more, the more you, it's, it's a risk versus reward. And, you know, it's it's something hard to really judge, and so I've been trying to skirt around that issue and trying to encourage and trying to move forward, but it's some of it's some people's personal choice. Others, you know, there's all these different variables that go into that, but it's still a concern, and I think it's going to be a concern for the years to come.
But your staff is gonna make the problem of your whole department less. Because they're gonna be permanent, they're gonna be dedicated, they know what they're getting into. Other people, a big flash comes up, COVID, I can't make a run. I'll go maybe once. Because, you know, I retired from the king of temporary health, McDonald's. And we have too many people out there in the US, so it's a headache. And, you know, we're dealing with youngsters mostly, but it's still a headache. They just don't have the. Not anymore. They don't have the initiative. What's that? Have you gone to a drive-through at McDonald's recently? What's that? They're our age. Oh, oh, yeah, oh, but mostly young.
And those are the harder ones, the older ones too.
Yeah, 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 especially the, yeah.
I'm not even gonna go there on that one.
You know, when, when we first, you know, said that we would pay for, you know, people that were sick, that got sick with COVID, there wasn't a vaccine. And I, since it's available, I'm not sure that as a, as a town, do we want to pay for somebody that comes down with back, with COVID when they could have gotten the vaccine? Right, but. Yeah.
But you're on the right track.
Yeah.
What you're saying is.
Because.
There's some type of incentivizing.
Right.
To do that and limit the amount of.
Choice.
Almost a choice, but eliminate the amount of benefits that when you don't.
Yeah.
It's, I, I see both sides. It's a very, it's a very difficult one to say one way or another. And, but I, I understand your point, because it becomes a very, it's a very real issue now since the vaccine's and it's gonna become more of a, a real issue once it becomes fully moved. And as more and more companies and municipalities require it, it will become a flashpoint one way or another. But it's definitely, like I said, something I want to talk about tomorrow and create tomorrow. Is that some ways that we deal with COVID here?
Okay. I guess that's it. I guess we're done. Thank you very much. Okay, what do you want to do?
There's a couple more, so we're not officially, we're not done it, but done it, Jeff. So just so you know, I've got the NBA, it's just motor view. They're projecting that we'll see fifty-three thousand two hundred and forty dollars, and so that's the amount that I've budgeted. Same thing with resurfacing on the local road streets, that's sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. And I've gone ahead and budgeted that on the CCD program or CCD fund. I believe I budgeted, I'm expecting about eighty thousand dollars in revenue, maybe a little bit higher. It usually comes in that way. In the past, we've taken money out for the sidewalk program from that fund, and we've done twelve thousand dollars in the past. The last couple of years we've been right, right around twelve thousand and reimbursing. I think this year we probably have like maybe two extra, two applications that was probably won't be. But we've got one application that was very large, doing a lot of work. So, I think I feel comfortable leaving that at twelve thousand for right now. And we might add some wiggle room, you know, if something comes up next year and we get additional applications, then we can increase it. Typically, we do ten thousand dollars for Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. We are done with the, our contribution to the climate levy. We're done with all the stellar projects, we're done with fire products. And so actually, we're only spending about thirty-two hundred, thirty-two thousand dollars out of that fund, which could be okay for a bit, just to give it a break. And maybe in the future, that might be where Wayne's Town Hall can come from.
For thirty-two grand?
No.
It's a tent.
It's his vehicle. But basically, we'd be putting, yeah, we'd be putting fifty thousand dollars back there. Riverboats, that's the one where we're projecting only about three thousand dollars. Thanks to, um, Marshall County Council of Aging, is it five thousand that you want to donate towards them? It's been three thousand in the past. Are we increasing that? For Culver Heath organization, correct, yes. And the late gauge, we committed one thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
What?
The late gauge.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
That's an annual thing, so, but that comes out of the riverboat as well. It's the gambling.
Gambling money.
I know what that is.
They give you a little chunk, you get a percentage of that each.
The whole state, yes, from the whole state.
It's kind of determined on how close you are to a particular casino and.
What's the closest casino to here?
Wayne, Wayne supports it, Wayne supports it.
Just on percentage of our gambling. Where is it?
It'd be south end.
That's not the number, times you've been this month, have it?
So if you're down, like on the, if you're down in the river, you're high refer, you're getting a lot of.
Right.
Okay.
If you're in Lake County, you get a lot.
Yeah, there you go.
Lake County gets a lot.
I'll let you take that one. You cover for the rest of us. This is reported and they were joking.
Yes.
So, and I don't know what, I, I've not heard anything from the, the boys and girls, are they?
No.
So. I need to hear something from them for this year as well.
Yeah.
If we put five thousand for the Culver Youth Club and we put five thousand for.
Council.
County Council on Aging and then thirteen thirty-four, that's eleven thousand three thirty-four. That fund has that fund, currently that fund has fifty-two thousand two ninety-five, but nothing's been paid out of it yet this year, so. So that would take it, so at the end of this year, it'd be at forty-two, nine seventy-five.
Ninety-five.
Which fund?
The Riverboat.
Riverboat.
At the end of the year, you'd project that will be at thirty-two plus whatever next year's.
It'd be, it would be forty-two at the end of this year, thirty-two at the end of next, of, at the end of twenty twenty-two.
I thought you were projecting, because you said nothing that's been paid out of it so far this year.
Correct, yeah, and it's about, we're spending about ten thousand, but we're getting about three thousand or so, so. It's actually.
I'll reach out to the director of official money request. Actually, that five thousand you guys did last year is what, ten thousand, because we have a donor matching funds request.
Right, true.
That's pretty much it. Right now, if everything stands, you've, you've kind of got an idea as far as the extra funds that we discussed where they've stand. Because those have their own funding source and the funds for that kind of, for the general fund, though, just for reference that, so forth, the first, the police, the fire, it may have lasted almost three weeks. If, if nothing changes and we go with the budgets as requested, we are over by two hundred and eleven thousand two oh nine.
How much?
Two hundred and eleven thousand two oh nine.
What percent is it?
Well, that means we need to cut two hundred and eleven thousand to be, balance the budget.
Ten percent over.
Yeah, so we have, gotta look at cutting that amount to do a balanced budget. That's exactly what we got.
And this year, I did much better. Just kidding. And I will say to you this year, I, I did do a better job of, I probably estimated the income a little bit higher than I have in the past. I had a better idea of what the township has done in the past, so it wasn't such a guess there. So I don't know that it's gonna decrease that much. The only, the only place that I could see getting a little bit more revenue might be the local, the local income tax. I don't have any reports on that yet.
I know.
So. And I'm waiting to hear, I, I reached out to AIM about what they projected as an increase for health insurance.
Right.
They haven't said it quite yet, and I said, are you just ten percent? Is that a good, is that a safe number? They said, yes, it would be, so hopefully ours will. No, it's not gonna be a ton of mine, but there may be some savings there as well.
So we're gonna need to meet within the next couple, hopefully you'll have all those figures in the next couple of weeks.
The health insurance usually comes in September. The lit, I'm not sure, hopefully the next, I would say early.
Do you want to publish this?
It needs to be published, I need to get it out. I believe I wanted to have the last hearing or the final passage in the second meeting in August. So we have a little bit of time.
Should we go ahead and schedule a work session at the first meeting before the first meeting?
We're talking about having an executive session at the first meeting in August. We could do both if you guys wanted. We were thinking executive on the project and call. I just talked to Bill about that earlier this week, scheduling that, because we, we need to make a decision on what to do with his contracts. So we could do a budget work session and follow it with an executive and follow it with a regular meeting. I will bring fruit and baked goods, make it one in at the first. Yeah, that's right, because you can't do executives. I don't think.
Well, we thought about, we thought about five, we thought about five, five, didn't wait for, we were gonna do the.
Executive.
The executive.
But I, I think that one should only take about half an hour tops.
Right.
Or if you all know the information.
Or if you'd rather just not cram it all into one night, you could always go, go for another evening.
Like the Tuesday in between or something, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
It's slightly selfish, because without us going to start all about this day.
Well. If, if, the first, the first meeting in August is what, August?
Is the tenth.
Is it tenth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Tenth. So we did the, if we did the exec, the executive on the tenth, and we could do budget on the seventeenth. And then the twenty-fourth is when you wanted to have everything etched in stone.
Yes.
So it's ten, ten for executive, it's a five thirty, or even six, five thirty? Five thirty on the tenth? Okay, five forty-five on the tenth for the executive.
And then have the work session for the budget that Thursday?
No, next Tuesday, the seventeenth.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Oh, the following Tuesday.
Following Tuesday.
So we're just running into, we, you, there's plan commission at six thirty.
There's what?
Plan commission at six thirty.
Oh.
Or you can go early.
Four o'clock.
You do it four or three?
Yeah.
Four to six thirty, that should be plenty of time. It better, it will be, let's put it that way.
Four to five.
Yeah, it will be, no. What's our executive session on?
Before the regular meeting.
The.
Is that, Joyce, if you have, you can max out a session on the seventh. If it's Tuesday? At four o'clock?
Yeah.
The seventeenth. So when is your, wouldn't you have your hearing, your budget hearing? My, my budget hearing is scheduled for the twenty-eighth of September and final pass, which on the twelfth of October. I'm sorry, what about October? Uh, October twelve. We'll probably turn as a, advance a bit. Are you, are we adjourned?
Yeah.